Order at seven thirty one.
The flag of the United States of America in this republic for which it stands, one nation unencountered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone could please stand and raise your right hand. Do you all solemnly swear faithfully discharge according to law your duties as members of Talon's Board of Education to the best of your abilities so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. This will now be due to the termination of officers and committee memberships.
I nominate Ashley Lundgren for chair.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? What should we ask?
I nominate Karen Moran for vice chair.
You're going to be a passenger too.
Yeah, so I go to any discussions, correct? Any discussions?
I would like to nominate Christina Cord for vice chair.
Second.
Any discussions?
Yeah, I would, I would like to discuss this because I would like to think that even though Republicans have a majority, we could, you know, continue in a bipartisan manner by using the skills of folks from Democrat side as well as our Republican side to take our turn forward.
I would just say that it's helpful to have minority representation on the leadership for caucusing purposes because when we can caucus and then come together with superintendent to discuss issues, it's helpful to do it that way. It worked well when Kalina did it that way. She would caucus with her group, I would caucus with my group, and then we would come together and we would meet with Dr. Willett and kind of discuss together. So it's helpful by part to need to have that minority representation. And I think it sends a good message to the community that we are doing it that way.
I would love to say, I don't think that there's any intention to not be bipartisan and not have full participation by both parties in any kind of, anything that the board does. So in terms of that, I think there's going to be good communication and the leadership team does need to work together well. And so there's, there's no intent to not have everyone participate.
So how will the minority caucus, how will the minority be informed about that?
I would say, can I talk as I write the motion? Okay, just making sure I can talk. Um, I do believe that within talking in our committees and talking within emails, talking, talking one-on-one, I mean, we're very open. I don't know that you see the door slammed shut in your face.
Well, we can't talk and email together as a board.
No, but you can talk one-on-one.
So would you as chair reach out to someone in the minority for us to caucus for some reason? Because that does come up.
Right.
We need to caucus.
I think that it is important that everyone collaborates together, but I think for me personally, like, you know, I think that a chair and a vice chair that must be aligned on certain matters regardless of like the parties and politics. And I think that, you know, Flor brings questions and leadership to the table based on her past experiences with the Board of Education. I think that in terms of the history of this, it wasn't until the 2017 elections that it changed having a Republican and a Democrat as chair and vice chair. And during that election, there was only two new members. Whereas right now, like, you know, the, the, for prior, like, working relationships were formed and prior to the appointments, I mean, right now, we're completely new people minus the three of you guys. So I think we need to have that given opportunity to work all together.
So I'd like to counter that because I would like to say if it isn't about politics or parties, what our charge is, is to make sure that the, the business of the schools continues on. And in terms of a resource, you don't get a more, you know, informed resource than Karen Moran. And in terms of optics, this looks like you're not going to listen to anybody but your, your contingent. So if that's, you know, what, you guys can clearly outvote us, but, you know, we do want this to work. We want this, you know, to work for our kids. And not to say that Christina doesn't, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, like, let's work together. We have a lot of talent on this team. And so let's, let's capitalize on that talent. Let's listen to each other, let's really truly listen to each other, get past all that. Yeah.
I think one thing that, at least I hope we can agree on, regardless of who gets the leadership leadership, that we're all in this for the children, for the community. I sincerely hope that we can reach across the aisle, we can reach to every chair to get the experiences and the knowledge that would really part to the problems at hand. Whatever happens in this vote, we still have the same mandate.
Just like to say, the reason why I support Christina for chair is just I've seen, having grown up on the ticket with them, that they've been able to really work very well together. I know that they're on the same page with a lot of issues. And I think that in order to have an effective leadership that can best to the people, it's important to have people that are on the same page. Obviously, I'm not saying that Democratic members of this board aren't all five, and I think it's our duty to make sure that they are informed in a proper way and are allowed to participate. But I think that it's just very important to have a leadership that is on the same page. So that's my reason.
So I'd like to bring up something else. One of the things that Christina was very big on is, you know, representing diversity of thought all throughout her years of service. And if you're saying that they're on the same page and they think the same way, then we're not going to get the diversity of thought if we choose Christina to be our vice chair.
So my response to that would just be that I think that leadership needs to act kind of, I'd say unilaterally, because that's not the right word, but...
So you're saying that you're going to unilaterally just block us out? That's kind of...
No, no, I said, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that I think the leadership needs to be on the same page, to provide us with a direction, a good direction to move forward, a simple direction. Obviously, we need to take everyone's thoughts into consideration, which I think is done best at a meeting like this where everybody can participate. But I think that the leadership needs to be somewhat on the same page in order to be effective.
So I did expect this pushback tonight, I did. And I one hundred percent understand where you guys are coming from, like, probably would feel the same way. But I do agree with Jacob, that I think we need to set our leadership up for success. We need to set Dr. Willett up for success, and we need to set this entire board up for success. There's plenty of opportunity for bipartisanship and leadership on our, our different committees and in this boardroom. I don't think bipartisan needs just agreeing on everything blindly. So with that said, I'm very humbled that you guys wanted to nominate me for vice chair and wasn't expecting it because it would be, I knew there would be pushback. In terms of reaching across the aisle, you know, the door, the door is always open as long as it's respectful and civil. And I think a lot of our business would be done in this boardroom. And I'm sure as leadership we'll reach out to you guys to caucus when needed.
I hope all of our businesses have this boardroom.
I just have a few last words. And these are words from a previous board member who served many years on the board. And he would always start our new session with the letters next to our names go away after the election. And we are all here at the table together for the good of our school system and our The role of the board is to set policy and support our superintendent in the efforts of the district and all of the employees. So I hope that we all keep that in mind as we work together and go forward. For a chair and vice chair, it's about building a cohesive board, and that's up to you guys. And also building consensus among board members. So I hope that you all will work on that because it shouldn't always be voting six against three. We should be working to get to some kind of either compromise or to understand what we are doing here together. So I hope that that is what you know as your duties.
Although I agree with the fact that leadership should be aligned, I also agree with the fact that the entire board should be aligned. However, when you're creating a leadership team, I think, I know you need to have diverse thought and diverse perspectives so you can get to that aligned vision. And in order to represent the folks on the board as a whole, as well as represent all the folks in town who have diverse backgrounds and ideas and thoughts and visions, we need to make sure that we're representing them on our board. Similarly, like they did last night on the town council, there is one of the majority and one of the minority, and they can work very well together and be aligned. Just because you're aligned doesn't mean you're in agreement. You need to challenge each other. Definitely, we need to have representation of the minority and the majority in multiple aspects of what we're going to be discussing. Again, I think we'd be doing a disservice to this board, as many people have already said, there's a lot of town here, we all want to do what's right for our town. Let's start it off right. Let's start off 2019 to 2021 off in the way to show our town that we are truly here to work cohesively, we are truly here to work as a team, we are truly here to hear each other and listen to each other. Because if that, if that is not an opportunity, we are already are setting the bar of what can be, the optics of what can be. I think we'd all be doing a disservice if we didn't utilize Karen Moran's expertise that she brings to the board. She's been on the board for several years, but she's been an advocate and heavily involved in the school system since her children were born. Not that anybody else has not and hasn't minimized it, but I definitely think that we need to utilize her strengths and knowledge behind, in, in here, in the optics of, you know, what we're doing in the school system, but what's out there in the schools themselves. Because she's been there every single time, and she's involved. And I think we'd be doing a disservice to our town if we didn't have her as the chair.
I just want to say that I have full confidence in Ashley and Christina that they will do exactly that, that this is not going to be about the R or the D or whatever after their next. I think that they will do everything that they can to make sure that this entire board listens to each other, comes together, we are all in this for the kids. That is why, I know that's why I ring, and I'm going to, that's why everybody in this room rang. This is not about Republican, Democrat anymore. This is about what is the best thing that can be done for our kids. And I have full confidence that Christina and Ashley are the leadership board, that they will do exactly that for Talon Public Schools.
Discussions, so are to make motion. So on the favor of Christina Cord as vice chair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any objections? The motion carries. In accordance to bylaws ninety eighty, at this time I'd like to appoint members to our standing committees. I'd like to ask each member what committees they are interested in. I will go around the table. Who will provide the policy of each committee? Typically, these committees will be meeting once a month.
So contract negotiations is charged with contract negotiations with various district bargaining units and recommending contractual amendments to the Board of Education. The policy committee is charged with reviewing, developing, and recommending amendments to existing policies and adopting new policies. The finance and facilities committee is charged with reviewing fiscal, operational, and facility-related matters as may come to the committee from time to time. The communications and outreach committee is charged with increasing opportunities for two-way communication between the Board of Education and other municipal boards, commissions, and committees, as well as the general public at large. And we would like to add that the town council liaison is kind of redundant for the communications, the town council liaison is redundant to the communications and outreach committee. So we're going to leave the town council liaison responsibility in, within that committee.
Let's start with Jacob.
I'd like to serve upon the finance and facilities committee. Yeah.
I would also like to serve on finance and facilities.
I would, I think I, finance and facilities would be, okay.
I would like to chair negotiations if possible because I'm the only existing member right now who has been on negotiations the past two rounds.
Let me just say, you guys can pick more than one.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say to, for you guys who know, even though there's nine members, we're going to be very busy with committee meetings, budget meetings, these meetings, other meetings, council meetings. So, you know, I, most people have to be on two committees, some are not. It's all about what your commitment level is and your capabilities and what you can bring to the committee.
Some, some of these dates have already been set, so you may have, you know, at once it's all over, you know, you decide to change.
That could be the committees to decide what works for them.
And so if you join communications and policy afterward, you could take these and decide if they will work.
I'm happy to support communications.
And then they, those dates, so they have to get republished, yeah?
If they've changed, it would obviously just change. But then just to let people know, there's already some here if they want to use them. And if not, they don't have to.
I'd be interested in being on policy.
Did you get my, I also sent communications and council to that as well?
Oh, you sent communications, yep.
I would be interested in finance and facilities and negotiations.
I'd like to, um, we put up to chair the policy committee.
I as well would be interested in chairing the policy and participating in the communication.
It's good to have at least three, so you have, you have to vote, you have to do a...
Yeah, because I was going to say for negotiations, we only have RNE, NEO.
In case somebody's not there, then you have backup.
So backup, that's what I'm thinking. So would anybody else be, be interested? Well, yes, I'm part of the, all of the committees anyways.
Yeah, you don't, do you agree?
Exufficient. So, I mean, you are, but if you're going to every single one of these, that would be a lot.
Okay, so who wants to go ahead and sign up for negotiations? Anyone else going once?
Oh, sorry.
Jacob, okay. Oh, come on, kill me.
Dana said, Dana said she posted.
I'll be happy to do that.
Dana, for contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations. Policy, we have three.
Communications, the...
Communication, we have three, we only have Karen and Tony, who also have communications.
No, I don't.
Communications?
Renee said negotiations, right?
Negotiations, so...
Christina just said she'd be on communications.
I'd like to chair finance, sorry, I didn't say that before.
So we have three for everybody, this is going. Okay, so. I will appoint Anthony Holt to the chair of the policies committee. Christine, I will appoint Christine Griffin to the chair of finance and facilities. I will appoint Karen Moran to the chair of the communications committee. And RNE to the contract negotiations committee. Next is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Just real minor one. I spoke at the last meeting and my address is wrong. It says Stewart Drive, spelled S-D-E-W, it's S-D-U-A-R-T. I think that S-D-U-A-R-T, Stewart exists in Talon, so just like verify.
You say you got that?
Got it.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's all right, yeah.
So the minutes will be approved as corrected, huh?
Yep.
Perfect. So now we have the next business in order will be public...
We need a motion, the minute.
I read that we don't.
Of when, no motion? Whatever you want to do is fine.
It said, it said minutes, we don't need to have a motion.
So you just adopted the minutes?
No, because I said the minutes are approved as corrected.
Okay.
That, I've, I have been best friends with Rob.
Okay.
So they're just approved.
No, they're approved as corrected.
Okay.
We don't need a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, that's different than like the...
No, we're going to do it this way going forward, um, because I...
So the council does it the other way as well?
Okay. So the next business in order will be public participation. Please be aware that there is a two-minute timeout.
Hi, Kate Bell, eighty town green. First, I'd like to welcome the newly appointed members and welcome back simply to your board members. Thank you for your attendance, everyone. I'm sure that everyone serving on this board is doing so in the best interest of the students, family, staff, and committee as a whole. As has been the case, and as has been the case with relatively large turnovers of boards in the past, I imagine there will be a little bit of a learning curve overall and a period of adjustment as everyone settles into their positions and finds a rhythm in working with one another. It's with this in mind that I would like to express just a little bit of surprise and concern that the board action item listed on the evening's agenda to consider establishing a curriculum committee. I'm definitely not an expert, but I do have an education background, and I have a fair amount of familiarity with theory agendas. So I was surprised to see an action item listed prior to having this item on an agenda as a discussion item, so that a group process could happen in public and a joint decision could be made about whether to move the item to action. I'm feeling unsure about how the decision was made to include this item for action, including whether there was bipartisan discussion about it or group discussion at all outside a public session. I also have some concerns about the intent of the committee itself. I do not believe that quote designing and implementing curriculum changes is within the boards, Board of Education's purview. And while I do agree that it is the board's responsibility to review existing curriculum to keep abreast of current trends, there are already structures in place to accommodate this, such as presentations to the whole board, which would seem to be to be more efficient, effective, and frankly, transparent. In short, while this new and informed board surely brings a high level of skill and expertise and a variety of areas to the table, none of the members are expert in the area of directing curriculum instruction. I will give a nod to the educating room. I hope that this job is for a couple of educators, you know, so I'm on the floor. I hope that this job is respectfully left to the professionals hired to do them.
Okay, that's a personal, tight two minutes buzz, so I'm not sure how this goes, but I just know it's two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Amy Duff, one twenty-seven, Robin Circle. I also want to express the same concern that Kate Bell just brought up as far as an, an action item being brought forward onto an agenda immediately without any discussion. In addition, I also have some concerns that this curriculum committee, and I have some questions regarding it. Maybe Dr. Willett can answer this or somebody else. I'm just curious, how do other board members in other towns work in curriculum committees? And what are their responsibilities and what are their roles? I'm also curious, was the language used to describe the purpose and function and duties written with specific indicators, was that authored by somebody here on the, on the board? Or was it lifted from another document? I also have lots of concerns that a committee would, as described, design and implement curriculum changes, and I want to know where that language came from and why that was added to it. And then in addition, I'm wondering who will determine this agenda and the topics? Is it going to be the Board of Ed members? Is it Dr. Willett? Is it going to be by data, district initiatives, state mandates, or personal choices? I'm also curious about the time constraint that you're putting on our administrators. Is this going to be done during the work day? Are you asking and pulling them out another night to work on these committees? And, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We just had two sentences left. Eight ballot, eighty town green. I also hope that this board takes some time to learn about existing structures and place to support you and your roles as you seek to become informed leaders and seek to make decisions that will make efficient and effective use of our district's limited resources. Thank you for your time again and for your service. I really want to get that back in there, so thank you.
Hi, Sergio, which, this is Gabriel. I'd like to thank you all for taking this position, which I'm sure, I see. I wasn't real happy with the way the Board of Ed and the town council worked together before, so I'm hoping that it proves now. I would also like to point out that we have to be, anyways, we need to realize we have very limited income. We know we're going to get less money from the state this year. We know there's at least a hundred and seventy houses in town that have the foundation, I would assume most of them have applied for the reduced taxes. One of them, so you're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars there. Things are going to be really tight, and we need to get really tight with our negotiations. I would like to point out, there's no doubt that once they hear this, most corporations ten years ago did away with their pensions. And they, they shortchanged the workers, what they did was they changed it to they were paid as they went. It was a defined savings plan, you know? And the pensions were eventually phased out for all the workers as they retired and no new ones got them. We need to think of a new way of going into these negotiations to somehow control costs and pay as we go and not have money spoken for years in advance. So my main concern is, not that I'm anti-school or anti-children, I have a granddaughter, I have children. But if you notice in the paper, twenty-nine thousand people moved out of state. Nobody, nine years in a row, with lots of people, nobody can afford, I don't have, my family's been here for over a hundred years. We have, I have twenty-seven in my family, cousins and what have you, and uncles.
Just, just, it's, it's, it's up.
Sorry, but my point is, nobody can afford to live in this town. We need to be sure.
Jeff Schrader, nineteen, Millisway. Congratulations on everyone getting elected to the board. Just a point of order in bylaw, or policy ninety seventy, you did not elect the secretary after you elected the vice chairman.
This has to fifty four, just I L A. I also take note with the formation of this curriculum committee, with the exception of Kate and Dr. Willett, I don't know any, any educator, true educator on the, on the board, so that is a concern for me. But we'd like to know, and I think the public deserves to know what it's about before you put it in action. Secondly, I think you've already, and congratulations, Ashley, I'm glad you're the, the chair. It wasn't going to be Christina, it's glad it's you. So congratulations on that. I think you've already been dismissed though.
So congratulations on that. I think you've already been dismissive, though. Kate asked to be the policy chair and you already dismissed her. Karen's got the most, um, uh, experience with negotiations and you dismissed that as well. And then you dismissed Kate's concern about the, about the minutes, and I understand that you're right to do that. According to Rob, um, that you're right to do that, but I think there should have been more discussion about that, so hopefully you'll get off on a better term.
Seven six, Kate Rayner. Uh, just a, first of all, congratulations to all of you. I'm sure you're all gonna work together for the best for the students, the staff, and the community, so congratulations to all of you. Great choices for your chair, vice chair. I'm sure all of you would have been great choices, but this will work. Uh, just a quick check online. Ellington and Ron both have curriculum committees on their Board of Eds, so it's not that unusual. So it works out in places. And that's it, congratulations.
Chin Rips from sixty-eight old Stafford Road. I just wanna say what many of us are thinking, but don't have the opportunity to say tonight. Um, not having Karen as vice chair is, is, is really big loss to the Board of Ed, just like losing Michelle Harold to the Board of Ed, so. Um, we have the choice right now tonight, or we did have the choice, you guys have the choice, um, to catch it before, you know, you lost it, we lost Michelle on the board. Um, and so losing Michelle, uh, excuse, Karen at the vice chair position, it's, it's really detrimental, so.
All right, I'm done. Amy Duff, one twenty-seven, Robin Circle. Yes, Ellington does have a curriculum committee. I downloaded all their minutes this mor- or this morning and read through them. It seemed to me, as I was reading it, it was more of an informational, um, committee where the, the administrators were sharing with the board some of the curriculum initiatives in the town. It was not developed for Board of Ed members to critique or develop curriculum. Thank you.
Sam Adlerstein, one sixty-four, Pine Hill Road. First of all, congratulations to all of you. Um, I just have a simple request and it's that you do your work at this table in meetings of the Board of Education. You make the decisions, you have your conversations. Um, and I, and I ask that because I don't, I, I really wanna follow your work and, and I'm committed to doing that. I'm not on social media, I don't have other ways of doing it, I probably don't, I'm not in the same circle as many of you. And so I, I would really appreciate you doing your work in this, in this group and even in your subcommittees. Um, if you have subcommittee things that you wanna approve, I think it becomes a recommendation to this committee. And that way the town can follow on, um, and we can participate in this way. Um, if you don't feel that that's appropriate or you're hesitant about doing that, I'd like, I'd like to hear that. I'd like to hear it tonight, actually. Um, and if you're, if you would commit to doing that, I'd really appreciate it. So again, congratulations to all of you and thank you.
I can't get away from this room. Congratulations, everyone. I just want to say, I've served on the board about five years, and yes, the Democrats did have control and had us chair and chairs, Democrats. And once the Doyle stuff down, Republicans, and I think the Republican committee was very pleased with that, that we're able to work together and have a Democrat and a Republican up his leadership, as Karen mentioned, for caucus reasons. So I think, I'm sure you'll do fine, but I think it's an opportunity lost by your partnership already. And great job last night, Tammy, and, and, you know, yourself and Steve to show to me you guys are one together.
Trisha, I am sixteen, Von Ant, Hill Road. Congratulations to all of you, I truly do. When I went, I do hope that you will work together. When I went to the polls recently, I, that's how I voted. I voted, who do I think is going to work together, reach across the house? What I'm seeing so far is not what I was hoping would be the result. So hopefully it'll, it's day one, so hopefully it'll come together. Um, and I, as Amy Duff pointed out, I have the same concerns about this curriculum committee. Just the wording that the Board of Ed is going to take part in designing and implementing curricular changes to enhance educational programs. I was a teacher for many years in Farmington and, um, I agree that to the Board of Ed's job. Hopefully you will leave that to the professionals who study education and, and are trained to do that, so thank you.
Anyone else? Do you want me to remove the agenda to the, the secretary? To the secretary? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to appoint, um, board secretary.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Dana Thobin for the position of board secretary.
Second.
Who needs a second?
Me.
Any? Any discussion? I think it's a climate issue. Okay, I think we still need to bring it to, um, and all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
She didn't.
Vaye? And then any abstentions? Right, so then motion fails. So, um, someone needs to entertain, I need to entertain a motion to appoint secretary, is that?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Tony. For, for the position of board secretary.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No, stand.
Okay, motion carries. Now we will go back to, the next business in order will be correspondence.
Oh, sorry. Correspondence, I think, we had one email that was referred to H R and another referring to board leadership.
So is that gonna be the secretary's?
Yes.
We'll take to continue with that, it's important.
So, okay, so just clarification, twice secretary and next time we meet, he's gonna go through all the emails?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have to know exactly what the secretary does and get that situated, then he'll run with that. Um, points of information is next, so the next business of order will be points of information.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
I just had a point of information about the curriculum committee. I hear a lot of feedback from the audience today. Uh, and it wasn't an intent to reinvent the wheel here. Uh, it's state statute that Board of Ed have curriculum committees under duties of education, the Connecticut State Statute two twenty. Uh, each local and regional board of education shall establish a school district commit- curriculum committee. The committee shall recommend, develop, review, and approve all curriculum for the local or regional school district. Uh, so with that, we weren't trying to be experts to write curriculum, I don't have that qualification at all. It's more, um, I think somebody in the au- in the audience had said informational. You know, we'd like to be informed of what's going on in the schools and if there are changes, that we approve it. Um, the wording came from, we, we, we looked at recent, um, several towns that had curriculum committees and the wording came from Verden's. Um, if policy decides that, um, we should change the wording, that would be fine for too.
Well, that's what's going to Moran. Um, I actually wanted to make a motion to, um, add an agenda item, H dot four, consideration of, um, consideration of policy change of adding a curriculum committee, um, because with Policy ninety-one ninety, when we, that is the policy that lists our scanning committees. So we're changing that policy and adding that committee. I feel that when, typically when we change a policy, policy, we have two readings as a board. First, for the board to be able to absorb the change and for the public to be able to weigh in. So typically we would have two readings of a policy change. So if we could add that to the agenda so we can have a robust discussion for all of us here and more to understand better what the goal is for this committee, I think that that would be beneficial to all of us to have that discussion together.
So you made that motion, right?
I made that motion.
Can I second that mo- that motion, please?
Make a motion.
So can you just clarify your statement?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused too, because if we're having it on board of action, we will be discussing it. And when we do that, isn't that, if it's already on, as Kate wanted to discuss it?
Well, we usually would have a discussion within the agenda and then vote to send it to action, but you've already put it to action, so I feel like we kind of skipped some quality discussion that the board can have together on that.
So the suggestion then is to add it to the H items, right?
H dot four.
Yep.
Okay, and then after that decide if we remove it to action or not?
Move it to action there, but I think we should have some more discussion of the board on it.
So if you make a motion and you second say.
The motion was. Yeah, the motion was to move, um.
Then we basically have the discussion.
So I just, I said consideration of policy change for adding that curriculum committee, so we've, we discussed it there.
Consider the motion. Okay, so, um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, opposed? Any abstentions? So motion passes. Back to points of information, Jacob, you had your.
Yes, um, I just wanted to point out that the particular wording of the, um, curriculum committee we established, um, says shall work with the administrators. Um, just to clarify that, it's not the committee that would be dictating policy or dictating curriculum. They would buy the policy after work with the administrators. Um, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, I'm not sure if.
Got a wonder.
I just wanted to say that, as Jacob said, with the administrators, and I think the last couple of meetings, I think having the presentations were a huge way to make sure that curriculum, that we are understanding how curriculum works. And it's my understanding that until those two presentations, the last two meetings, those had not been done for the past couple of years. So I think that's just something that is part of this curriculum committee. We wanna see more of these curriculum presentations so we as a board can understand.
Um, at some point, if you want, I could weigh in on this, I'm not sure exactly where you are as an elected body with respect to that, but happy to offer.
It seems like, and not to disagree, it seems sooner than two years and then we have like the Virchgrove thing, you know, happened, so.
Oh, yeah, well, what, typical, well, I can weigh in on your whole thing, if that is.
I have, I have one thing, I would prefer Dr. Willett to kind of weigh in here, but.
Well, I think we're gonna get into discussion too on each four, so I think we can wait for really digging into this too deep during that portion,
Right.
'cause we're really on just that points of information.
Okay, so we'll, then we'll just table that discussion.
Do that, yes, there we go.
Right, cool. Um, are there a line?
Any other points?
I have a point. May I draw? Um, Sam, you had a request that all decisions, uh, and work are done at the table in this room and subcommittees report to this body as well in public s- in public session. Um, I would like to commit to doing that, so I just want you to know that I'm committing to do that.
Anyone else with a points of information? Okay, so the student representatives, Fisher, Thompson, and Alexandria Acosta will now give their report.
Hello, um, so I'm Fisher, this is Alexandra, and we are the, uh, student reps to the Board of Ed. We were elected by our student council at the high school to represent the entire student body, not just of the high school, of the entire district. Uh, and keep specifically the kids at the high school updated on what's happening with the board. Uh, and also to keep you all updated with what's happening in the school system. So last Friday, on November eighth, there was the Coffee House hosted by Talon New Services Community Theater. It was absolutely wonderful, we have.
It should be great.
Thank you, we have a bunch of wonderful, wonderful musicians and artists in, in Tallinn and it's, it's nice to see that being celebrated.
Um, so, um, Monday was Veterans Day at the Slay, and we had a two-hour-long advisory, which shortened schedule and changed schedule around. And half of the advisory was spent, we made, we made a thousand paracord bracelets for, um, to send overseas to help with our soldiers' end. Um, then we had a assembly that was a program where we watched videos and was just like a service that, um, honored them. And then additionally, DECA went to, a bunch of, the DECA members went to the senior center for cyber seniors on Tuesday to help with educating the seniors on using technology.
We also have a food drive going on through student council right now. Uh, it has been going on since Monday, November eleventh, and it's going through the twenty-first. And, uh, it's all, you're, you're standard canned goods, non-perishable items for the, uh, food pantry for the Thanksgiving to rest of the holiday season. Uh, additionally, boys cross country at the high school, they just one state opens and they're moving on to regionals. They are absolutely fantastic and I, I think it, it goes without saying, they are a great example of what makes the town school system great.
Jane, catch me.
Yeah, I, I cannot keep up.
I don't know.
Um, and I, I would just like to say, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I can say this for both of us, that, um, we as, uh, as students have hope and faith that the board will represent us best as students, but also that we are elected by the student council of the high school to best represent the students and so we will voice whatever we believe is in their best interest as well.
Okay, Dr. Willett will now provide his superintendents for four.
Yes, hello everybody, um, many of these things, or at least two of these things, you have seen before. Twenty twenty Board of Education meeting dates. Very exciting document that tells you what is laying before you, lies before you rather. Um, these are set up based on some past experience. The asterix dates have previously been canceled, but they're often put out there just in case the board wishes to keep them. Uh, to take a look at, uh, November, well, you can do the asterix pieces yourself, but, um, at the bottom, some others here, November eighteenth, um, is moved from November twenty-fifth so that it's not right up against Thanksgiving, uh, Thanksgiving break because people had, um, expressed some, um, opinions about that prior. And December sixteenth is meeting from December twenty-third for similar reasons. Typically, we do our meetings, um, on the second and fourth Wednesdays, but, um, you know, in those cases, those would be moved so that they were not interfering with people's plans. Not much more to see here, really. They're straightforward, they've been out there for a little while, but, um, it is your purview to change them. If you do change them, be careful because they are positioned away from the other town meetings too. So there's other town meetings in there, like town councils, the Tuesdays and so on. So you'd, you'd be making a motion to accept these, um, with a second possibility discussion, or, or not?
Or amendment?
Before we move it to action, could we move the meeting time to seven P M? Is that possible?
We could, you know, I, I, people have thought differently about this, we can definitely discuss it. I personally have a lot of objections.
Don't think it gets to go home earlier, if we start earlier.
I do know that some people, there was something, uh, that people have trusted the past about getting here from the various responsibilities.
Well, we can dis- we can, well, if you make a motion, I can discuss it, right? Well, we can just, we can, well, if you make a motion, I can discuss it, right?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to move it to action.
Okay.
I I don't know, before I move it to action, I'd rather know how everybody felt about moving the meeting time.
You feel a seven, so can we have a discussion without actually having a motion? Right here for that purpose?
Uh, same there.
Yeah, I'm the same there.
Okay.
Well, I would, uh this is my first meeting here. I'm making sure I'm doing this, I got my rules.
I don't think they're having a lot of time.
Let's hope not. Um discussion.
I'll just weigh in and say seven thirty worked for me personally, and it has worked in the past for people who have to get home from work and get their kids settled and and then come back out. Um so it's just.
Yeah, I'm, seven thirty is much easier than the rounds to get here.
Um I'd probably be a seven, only because I've noticed some of these meetings tend to go rather late. And um I guess earlier we start, but the earlier we finish.
Um I I'd be fine moving it to seven.
Mm-hmm.
So you?
I also have heard the meetings run late, and so to me, starting a little bit earlier, so a little more than five minutes, I feel like. I'm not trying to keep us on the past here. Would be, would be better. Um.
Oh, I don't have any feelings about it. I may just feel it sometimes, so. Seven's fine, seven thirty.
You're like, you'll just be here.
I personally like seven, I mean, it's a better chance of getting home and get the kids to sleep.
I mean, what is the?
I work till six to be born, so getting here for seven is very difficult. And listen, I get up at four thirty or five every morning, go running, so being athletic is that, right? But I would like to be timely to meetings to make an engage in commitment, but I think it's.
Absolutely, we're all volunteers here. We're all giving a lot of our time.
Right.
No, I know, I'm just saying that's. And I want to be efficient and effective with our meetings so that we don't go over, you know.
So we're going to entertain them also?
I'm gonna make a motion to. I'm gonna make a motion, but I don't, I don't also want people not to be able to make it, so I think we stay seven thirty and um go out, see how it goes.
So we'll just put a motion.
Hopefully that clock over there will not be ticking till like ten o'clock, because I'll turn into a pumpkin. So um we just need to.
So we'll, we'll make a motion to move item, this is H one.
Motion. Yep.
To board action K two.
Second.
So any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Oh, we could have approved that.
Oh, we could have approved.
I'm sorry about that, that was my mistake.
Do you want to just do that? Motion to approve the board, I can't make a motion.
Can I, can I resend my last motion? Or no?
You're not sending it to action?
It says another motion, motion to approve the board of it, like it says I could just make the motion to approve.
Number two. To just.
That's from what we get to action.
Yeah, these are prep notes for how to make the motion when you're ready to make the motion.
Okay.
We need to.
We have a number two.
Number two, Dr. Willett.
Okay, four.
This is just when you're ready to make it, this is trying to make it easy for us, but typically do it move it to action.
Okay. Okay, so this is. I mean, you're still superintendent's report.
Yep, still on that, right?
So, yep, so you're on transportation.
Got it. So we're moving to H two right now, which is transportation. This is a continuation of the transportation conversation from from before. Um Mr. Mary, you had a question, was part of the public with respect to um what exactly was going on with thirty twenty. Um we've used this before, I used it last year with respect to the Birch Grove project, because in the reconfiguration of the Birch Grove project, it was already unclear what that building would need. So I used that to extend it to a one year agreement, but it's in the authority of superintendent to make those kind of changes or make those kind of exceptions when we need to do so as a district. Uh so that's what I did in response to Birch Grove last year, but the point of putting this in front of you that now this year and again is that um you have an opportunity here, there's a, there's a deal on the table that is favorable towards the district. If we act now, we could take advantage of that that favorable deal. If we don't act now, we'd probably go into the bid process. Um trying to give you all the information necessary so you understand what that would mean if you're going to the bid process. Um and what, you know, what the reasoning may be to act on it outside of the bid process. Um and typically in those situations, I illustrate here also within thirty twenty four, you know, thirty twenty I would get four ninety five. Um this, this kind of thing generally would be considered when there could be substantially higher cost to the school district, inefficient use of personnel, or cause of disruption to school operations. It can also occur when the item being waived comes from a special source, including but not limited to sale, purchase plan, government discount, trade in allowance, to have it supply a lower cost than, which would result from the bid process. So in these situations, it could very well be that it would be a a deal that is very similar to this one or or worse than this one. Um and it would cause a great disruption to the process. So if you're not going to get a radically different deal or a radically better one, um we would be inheriting a very large disruption to the process and making a transition for a deal that is not better or it's not, you know, or similar to the one we did. So um instead of just doing this myself as a waiver, I put it in front of the board so the board could kind of chew on this. You don't have to do anything with it. I gave you some comparative information. I also tried to explain the duration of what we've been doing here. This extends back more than a year and a half. We did use a consulting firm to give us an idea of what the situation was, so it wasn't based on, you know, on just just our feedback. They gave us some parameters about what the deal would probably look like. This deal comes in significantly better than those parameters. And I have no particular reason to promote a deal um for our student. It's just that the conditions, the terms of this are are favorable, again. So, so in that vein, um I put the information back out, tried to create some some additional bullets here that explain again where we were at. I did, um I was asked to look at a four and five year option, I did. Adding a fourth and fifth year would be at four point five percent, so I don't necessarily recommend that, so but. Uh there are other things that um you could throw out there, but they would compromise the district. But we started trying to look again at changing the age of the buses. Uh anyone who's served in the district for a little while knows that the age of the buses has been a big problem for us. Um resulting in breakdowns and a lot of bad P R. So this, this particular proposal kind of addressed a lot of the things that we needed. Did so with um an increase that was reasonable, especially for the market. And uh achieves doing it without a great disruption to the school's district's operations. And it's working well within the parameters of thirty twenty to do that, just have to read a little bit more. So it's one of those things that um that could work out for you. I did not want to do this unilaterally, it's why it's in front of the board. If the board decides not to do it, no problem, we'll go out to bid. But you could get a deal that's very similar to this one with a lot of disruption, or you could get on this course.
And I have a question, um when was the last time we did go out to bid? If we've been with um first student for like twenty years or whatever.
We went out to bid in the last cycle and we stayed with first student.
And when was that last cycle?
I think it's like three or four years ago then.
So it was, I would like to know like actually when.
It was just before Mr. Adel's team was on the board at that time.
I think it was two thousand thirteen, I think.
It was just before I came in, so it was in three, it was probably, it was before I got here.
Yeah.
And we stayed with first student at that time.
Big quote back here, sorry.
So in looking at the options, I tried to provide. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tony.
Dr. Willett, you mentioned that you used a consulting firm to give us a side picture with the bid, might look like. Do we have access to that, or?
It was, uh we, we, we consulted with him verbally, it was Walsh Consulting. Um there was no report, it was meetings with him, he could have paid more and that and things, but he refused telling us what the market was, what we could expect from increases, what was reasonable, what we would probably get. He looked over our profile and then explained what I put in here. But there was no um report per se.
No report or or meeting minutes or anything that would.
Well, there's my notes from our meetings. I could show those, but they, they say essentially this. I mean, yeah, it's, it's what I put here, extension.
Okay, um I just had a couple of questions. Um so we're losing a bus, one bus route in the first year and then one in the next year. Is that due to declining enrollment?
We were able to do that due to a time of decline.
So um how does that affect the amount of time that they can throw on the bus? Is it substant, gonna like make their rise longer at all or?
No, that's a great question. It shouldn't, because what happens is they use the, they use software, I think it's called Telenor. And it takes into account all of the kids where they live, and then they run it through their software and they tell you, they have to generally be able to do it within an hour. So these routes, these buses would still be able to do it within that span of time.
Is that the general length of the bus, or?
Generally, you should have it done within an hour, yeah.
An hour or less? Well, understood, but I didn't know if that's kind of, are we like at forty minutes and this is going to take us to forty five or fifty, do you understand that or not?
No, no, it would all be, it's, I mean, the expectation is under an hour, so all of them should be under an hour. Having said that, you know, we can't get out of our driveway for twenty minutes sometimes, you know, because of what's going on. So it depends on what's happening in town, but generally that's the rule, and that's what you have to stick by. So, you know, they, they would be doing it within an hour's time, generally.
Okay. Um and then just one other question, because I've just personally kind of heard a little bit about like the buses breaking down and stuff like that. So do we have any um like assurances, or is there any performance sort of wording that would be in a contract that would allow us to sort of hold our feet to the fire a bit if we continue to have these breakdowns and stuff like that?
Yeah, we, we, we used Shipman and Goodwin last year to get the contract language for the one year that we would extend into this. They put in everything that they typically put into transportation contracts. Um and so they put in what we can put in with respect to that, because you can't necessarily plant parax, god, you know.
I understand that, I'm just.
But generally, the, the, the lower the number um of years on the bus, the better their maintenance record. And we have worked with them and tracked their maintenance and all of that. We've definitely held their feet to the fire. In fact, there was a period of time um where things weren't going so well, and um Mr. McLaughlin and I, who I think is at United Center somewhere. Right? I mean, we spent a lot of time working with them on that, and to their credit, they responded and and things got better. But with old buses, there's only so much you can do.
I have a question on that one, because I was watching from home last week in my PJs, or, you know, it was last week though. How, how things change. And I did still hear that there were buses that were going to be ten years old. How does that impact when I thought that the bus fleet was supposed to be newer?
They are, they shouldn't be. On average, they're replacing, in a cycle, they're replacing all of the um the older ones with the the newer ones. There shouldn't be. The average ages of the buses are in this proposal.
Yeah, it's a second page.
Yeah, and then I was confused when last time, I don't know if they were the ones.
There shouldn't be, the, where we are now is they're more than ten, they're ten years old.
Yeah.
Where there will be is that they will be, they'll be like twenty fourteen's, there might be twenty tens, you know, but they'll be upgrading them to twenty fourteen's.
Yeah, the twenty ten will put us at the end here.
Right, but they're upgrading them to, you know, right now we have very.
Oh, I know.
But um the average age, generally what we're looking at is the average age being listed in here of, from eleven years to five point seven for year one, six six, because there's, they're shifting in and out of the buses, and then five nine. They're basically cutting it almost in half by number of years, so it's going to be in the right direction. Um and the twenty fourteen's will run way better than the two thousand and three and four and fives and things we've been pushing on now. So, and it gives us the right number of backup buses, uh we need.
Maybe it was in terms of a backup bus, I think they ended up that year was, that's what it was.
We, we also use them for shelter. So just to keep in mind what we do for buses, um for a place like Birch Grove right now, um there's no location to evacuate to that's easy for Birch Grove, for instance. So we use our buses as shelter points, so there's buses dispatched to Birch Grove in an emergency that stand as like a shelter. Um if they ever had to move out of that building. At the high school, they would go to T M S, at T M S, they would go to the high school. At T I S, they go over to the town buildings, but at Birch Grove, they're a little more isolated, so we use our buses for that. And that again is another example, if we already have all of this working with first student, we coordinated all of that, we practiced it, we drilled it, your buses will be better. Like there's a lot of logistical things that goes into our relationship with a company that we already have.
Oh, I love, I love our drivers, I just don't like their climate.
So, so those, yeah, so those buses.
But let's go ahead and give Dr. Willett.
I just, yeah, I believe um somebody had said last week that the twenty ten buses were going to be our backup buses.
Yeah.
She says, I mean, they're not included in this, the twenty four number?
No, they're, they're phased, there's a phasing of the buses. I don't know. Um let me see if I can tell you exactly when, one of those has, has the phasing of it. But um you know, they, they would be phased, all the older ones would be phased out with the new ones phased in, and that's why these alternate a little bit, the averages.
I guess my question would be, out of the twenty four routes, did first student give us an exact number of twenty fourteen buses, twenty fifteen buses, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
They do have that.
I think I personally would be curious to see what was older than twenty fourteen, that will be a bus that we're going to be relying on every single day, as opposed to the twenty ten buses that will be kind of our backup emergency buses?
Let me see that. Dr. Take this one out.
Okay.
No, he's looking at that. I have one other question.
No, there's discussion.
And do the, do the buses have cameras on them or G P S at all in this new um iteration?
The buses, no one typically have the cameras, but you know, um sometimes.
You have a question? Yes.
It's the various from bus, like generally speaking, like having video of the buses very regularly. Um it, it depends on how old the buses, but if, if they're this young, then they probably have them, just.
Generally, so it's not in the con, that's what I guess was asking, is the contract call for cameras to be on the buses for student safety and those types of things?
Typically, it's a model year type thing, and they have them or they don't, so I'd have to check.
It's probably not.
That would be a good question to ask to find out.
I mean, I just think, you know, these are not the nice stuff.
I mean, the, yeah, and these things definitely aren't as to have, but again, like um the percentage increases we're getting for what the proposal is, that those are the dollars that we have to impact, so I would like, I don't care about G P S as much as I care about a zero in year two, because zero in year two means I don't have to cut teachers.
Right, no, I.
So I'll take the no G P, you know, I'm not, I'm not making a comment against anything, so I'm just saying like, that's the kind of thing.
But it's to, to find out anyways, it's going to ask the questions, it's going to answer, knowledge is what, you know, helps everyone understand.
Yeah. Of course. Yeah, well, exactly.
Any other questions on the?
Inside it, one more, I'm looking at the information you're providing. It says uh that due to the dynamics of bidding and the market rates offered, we had a reasonable chance. Is the consultant saying that open competition would raise the cost rather than show, giving a better uh view?
Or same, or same.
Or same, yeah. Uh it just, it's that dynamics of bidding that is.
So for transportation contracts, every town is very different, that's why it's hard to get apples to apples. So some towns, their plain bill are very flat, there's not a lot of ungeared on hills, they have a certain amount of those that are repeated. We have a very different kind of transportation dynamic than certain other towns, right? So those kinds of dynamics play into the offer that we will get. Um they are, not all things are apples to apples here, which is why it's, it's very hard to determine sometimes like what you would get versus what someone else would get. We stayed with first student last time for um for reasons that a little part of their thinking at that time. But I can understand it in a way because um, you know, when we do talk to people about it, I mean, consultants of the places, but also talk to the um the consultant Walsh, um you know, he laid it out for us as to the kinds of things they consider and what Talon's terrain and things like that are about. Um the kind of thing that we were expecting was to receive rates that would be an adjustment for us. An adjustment bigger than what we expected, you know, we expected bigger than what we saw. Based on the conversations that we had had, based on, you know, all of the information that we had been talking about, we respected. So going out to bid might mean that we get some people offering things, but they still have some of the very same dynamics involved that first student, without the relationship and without other um driving factors that are making first student give us a little bit better of a deal. They want to keep us, and there's a good reason. We've been a good client and we've got a good relationship. Um I think they are giving us this deal to hold on to it. I think it is going to be better than the market. I think it is going to be better than the market right now if I had to guess. Um, right now, they have to be paying across the board for any of these transportation companies, they have to pay their drivers more because they're not retaining them. So that was one of the things we talked about, that, you know, across the board, they have to give these individuals that are part of union's bargaining, that's, they're getting much better wages than they did and that's driving all of the companies up. So there's not as much flexibility and our town is a very different kind of, um, terrain than some of the others. And that makes, that that does get, you know, and client, and in all frankness, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit strange, but we do have some, I don't know what it is exactly.
What's, what are their challenges?
We do tend to have some, um, some challenges, so it's just, um, it's those factors that we consider. So, again, you know, I have nothing to lose here either way, I mean, then really what I would have had to have lost is if I didn't put that in front of you, had an option to do this and went out to bid and it turned out worse. That that might not be looked at as a good thing, so I wanted to, as soon as I had any of the information, get it out there, um, as fast as I could.
Okay.
Um, could you talk a little bit about the disruption part of it if we do, if we did go out to bid and?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we're swapping, you know, we would have to move one company out with the next company
Swapping buses, moving their trailer.
and they would have to become used to, and we have to go through all of our all-hazard plan, safety and security protocols with them again. We would have to set up, um, you know, meetings and set up the drill structures, I mean, it it's not impossible, it's just lots of hours, lots and lots of hours and not a, not a lot of people to coordinate these things, you know, so, um, these things tend to be directly coordinated by myself, I don't have a surrogate or someone else. So we would be having to talk to them about their all-hazard plans, you know, get the principals in, meet with the transportation people, transition an old one out of the lot, transition a new one into the lot, have them meet with public safety, have relationships start to form there, you know, they're already there now. Um, nothing is impossible, it's just if we're not, if the deal would not be that much different, that that would be doing a whole lot of things that we already have working very smoothly right now. We know, you know, we know that they do a good job when we do have the emergencies of of dispatching those buses. You know, that wasn't something that, uh, it it happened right away, you have to kind of get everybody on the same page and drill that, um, they're very.
I have a question for Jacob as well.
Um, so I have a couple of questions, uh, the first one is, according to the language here, um, we did give you the waiver to, um, seek this contract. It's not finalized yet, I was just kind of curious how much you could potentially change if, okay, all right.
It, yeah, and and, um, I have the authority to do the waiver, like, just do.
Okay.
But but, um, I would rather have you all look at it.
Okay, and, um, my second question was, uh, we saw a one-year extension last year. Um, is there, like, are there pros or cons to doing that again, just so that the board can have more time to review this?
Well, the conditions will probably not change a lot.
Okay.
Um, we can, but, um, our bargaining position doesn't get stronger doing one-year kind of things, right? Because if we're gonna do a one-year, we're going back to the same people for the one-year. And they can probably, um, you know, they would be in a stronger arguing position. Because we're saying, hey, we're just gonna do this, you know, one-year, we're not going out to bid and we'll do it again. Um, so, you know, this, the way this lines up is, we know we're gonna be in a situation with Birch Grove. We would have some things that we could plan on without any additional logistical headaches with the company that's already with us and is working with us. Um, and then at the end of the time that Birch Grove is transitioning, you'd be going out to bid. They they don't go that far, so if you chose, like, if we choose a three-year option around the end of the time Birch Grove's transitioning back into a building, we would be going out to bid again, so the timing would work out pretty well there too if we wanted to.
That would be awesome.
Because there's not as much chaos and all kinds of other things going on. There is a lot going on right now.
Mm-huh.
So like if we have one in the, you know, hand that is not going to be radically different, it helps us logistically and operationally, um, you know, to consider that at least. If not, we'll we'll go through the process, it's just a little. Um, Mr. McLaughlin's here tonight too, he's the business, uh, director also of the transportation, like, did you have anything to add or do you like to add?
Do you have anything to add?
I think the superintendent has hit all the points of the contract.
Cover the points, but you need to get the bus, you know, for her. Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't looked on the side of the table.
I was, I was just wondering, is there a deadline for when we need to say yea or nay to this particular contract?
So, the longer we wait, the less competitive we would be in a bid. So, I would rather the board say nope or yes tonight. If you couldn't, I would just say we'll go out to bid. Because I, the where we're at right now is you don't meet again, you know, for another, say till December or November, um, and the longer.
You must make it a special meeting.
You could, it's just, you could do that, it's just the longer that you wait, what happens is, um, it takes a while for these companies to get their stuff together. And six months is generally what I have heard to be the goal. So we don't wanna push too far out and if we didn't get it resolved until, you know, midsummer, that would be very hard to logistically with everything else that's going on. So, um, you know, if you did not want to do it tonight, which entirely.
Fine, you know, whatever you want to to do is fine.
Um, then I would suggest that Mr. McLaughlin and I get on the bid thing right away, we would just start to move forward with the bids right away. Um, if you wanted to call a special meeting and then reconsider it next week, that's fine too. But what I wanted to do is make sure the board had a chance to see this. I didn't wanna act, you know, that early, even though I feel like the conditions exist for me to do that under the waiver provisions. Um, I don't want you to miss out on this, but I also, I don't want this to stop us from getting the most competitive bids we can if there's some skepticism about this piece of it, so.
I mean, I will say personally that the last time we went out to bid was seven years, so to me that seems like it would be, put us, push us out to ten years if we were to go with a three-year contract. And I don't know, like, the rules per se for businesses, how often you go out to bid, but I feel like, I don't know that we would have enough time, like you said, for the crunch time to do that unless we got a year extension. Because it feels like there are a lot of moving parts and I don't know that those decisions could be made if that's.
So.
I mean, that's just.
I guess if I had to say something, I wouldn't recommend that you're extending on me because you're really not that much different in a position than you'd be in, you know. I guess you could have more to think about whether you want to bid, but. Then just bid, you know, I mean, it's just, and it's okay, if you're uncomfortable with it, um, I am merely giving you the option that is out there so that you have a chance to to at least know about it, chew on it. Um, I can answer your question. That's good. Uh, year one, you'd have four twenties, meaning twenty like the year twenty.
Twenty.
You'd have four vans that are twenties.
Those are twenty-three?
Yeah, that year of the twenty, year of. So you would have vans, there'd be four twenties, there are type A buses, there'd be five twenties, this is year one. Um, type C buses, there'd be ten tens and then there'd be fourteen fourteens. Um, and then the average age for year one is five point seven because year two, you would have the four twenties, the, have the vans, the five twenties of the type A. Type C would be nine tens and then fourteen fourteens to be a six point six. And then year three, you'd have again the four twenties for the vans, the five twenties for the type A. Type C would be nine fifteens, there's twenty fifteen model. And then there would be fourteen fourteens, um, for a five point nine year. So, in the third year, you're gonna have four model twenty vans. You're gonna have five model twenty type As and by the third year, you're, you know, you're looking at twenty twenty-two, you'd have twenty model twentys.
So really?
And then you'd have nine fifteens, there'd be like seven on that one. You'd have fourteen fourteens, so it's like eight years about for those, right? And the average of all of that is five point nine.
Can you repeat year one again, I'm sorry?
Year one, you would have four vans that are model twenty.
Okay.
You would have five vans that are mo- I'm sorry, five type As that are model twenty. You'd have ten type Cs that are model ten. You'd have fourteen type Cs that are model fourteen. And that would be an average of five point seven, that's the first year of transition.
Yes, so we still have, in year one, we still have ten two thousand ten buses?
You have ten two thousand tens, but then you siphon those out and they become replaced by year three with fourteens and fifteens. But keep in mind that it's a phasing and that phasing helps your rates.
I understand that, I guess I'm just still concerned about the twenty-tens in year, that many twenty-tens.
I think that's a lot. Cause the second year just only drops down one of that twenty-ten.
Okay.
I mean, so for the rates that you have, you probably would not get radically different range, that's the thing. If you wanna have the newest ones, like I know districts that did do that, those are very expensive. You know, so that that's all part of the, that, so to that point, you definitely can do that, go out to bid, when you go out to bid, if you ask for all twenty twenties, for instance, you'll get them, you'll just get them at a very high price tag. And that's the, so this won't be that different, is the thing. Um, and I could go back and say, well, we would like to have more of the fourteen fifteens earlier in the process, that's fine too, but that would push up the rate.
I think what concerns me is if we do go out to bid, um, we're kind of putting ourselves in the wind, but then I think about the costs associated with it. When it goes out to bid and we get a new company in, the logistics, like you said, it's switching over the buses from the different yards, the the costs of our staff in town doing the training, that we have to utilize some resources to get every, you know, the new, the new, uh, company onboard to what our different protocol is, so. I see a lot of dollar signs or, you know, in the future when we're bringing on, just like when you're bringing on a new employee or a new company and there's training, there's costs associated with that. So I get concerned that, um, that we might turn a blind, maybe might, I don't wanna say that, we might be rejecting this, this contract or this situation um, for hopes of something better, but it's gonna, it's gonna end as costing you more down the long run. And this is, I feel this is a solid. Thanks.
Um, I would just say, the advantage I see to this is, um, you know, we are gonna be phasing in newer buses, which is good. Um, hopefully that leads to us breakdowns, um, and the disruption part is a very big concern for me just because of our limited staff and time that we're gonna be adding to our time constraint of having to. So, um, and I don't know, in the long run, if that's worth it and going out to bid sounds very risky to me.
So I may add one thing, so I'm just looking at each of your questions, trying to get, all vehicles must have video cameras and good working order. That's part of the current contracts, we'll, so that was there. The media from such video cameras provided to the board has needed the paddle chart.
Okay, thank you.
No checks.
I don't know.
Could you guess me?
Still a lot, I, I just do things, I I don't think it's, you know, really a typically bad deal, I mean, personally. I looked at some other, like, costs in other towns and a couple of other contracts and to me, the increases didn't really, or or pretty good comparatively. Um, and number two is, just because you go out to bid doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna go with another company. It's really just best practice to check and make sure and kind of keep everybody honest for lack of a better term, you know, just in terms of what rate you could get, so so you know, and it doesn't mean that there would be any disruption whatsoever, it just means that you have done best practice and gone out to bid on a five million dollar spend, so that's, that would be mine, but, um, I don't see this as necessarily, you know, a bad thing either.
I just wanna say, I'm good reading, uh, I think in terms of, I certainly don't see this as a bad deal. I do think that it behooves us to to test the waters and and make sure that this isn't the only up here the best. And and I think our, whether that you guys started that in conversation with the consultant. Uh, the fact that we didn't necessarily get a report or anything out of that concerns me that we, that we can use it necessarily as part of the the waiting factors. But I'm also a little bit interested in trying to quantify what that disruption actually means, because that's, that's no- nothing to just dismiss. It it's certainly something that we have to look at if we're talking about an extremely limited staff and significant man hours, then that balances. But how do we put numbers to that to really be able to line those up and and make the informed decisions?
That would be an exhaustive, I'm just saying, like, that would be an exhaustive study, um, and like, when, when, in my role, right? When we've changed bus companies, like, the the toll on the kids is intense because it's different bus drivers, it's different routes, the parents don't know. Um, it's 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 an intense, like, human cost, which I think personally is not worth it. There's enough going on in time, that's what I think. Um, the other piece is, you know, like, just, I mean, like, I know what time the buses are gonna come and so I hire my babysitter, oh, god, right? So to come and then she knows what time the buses are gonna, you know what I mean? But then I think on the backend too, like, all the calls and then the schools will have to take because so-and-so is late and, you know, it's, it's a lot of people, it's a lot of time. So that's what I see, you know, when we switch bus companies, you know, cause we have them coming all over the place. That's another structure. That's a human cost, it's a lot.
I have to say, one important thing that, um, Mrs. Harms' vendor said was that, um, it's, there there is a, uh, a certain level of comfort in the bus company we have now. We have, of of course, kids going their first year in the school system, obviously don't have that established comfort, but even then, their parents a lot of times have seen the buses going down that route, so the parents have that established comfort, at least to a a smaller extent. But you have these kids who are comfortable with the drivers and, I mean, you've all been kids before, you've all had first days of school, like, you know what that is and having even that small bit of, oh, wow, this, this is something I am used to, this is something that I am okay with, it's, it's good for the students to have at least that certain level of comfort.
Just one more question. I understand about the comfort level with the kids, but this is a lot of money we're talking about, this isn't, you know, change. And I also think we need to think about, is this bus contract going to give us the safest, most reliable buses? And I don't know if we can answer that, and I think that's definitely part of the issue, and if we go out to bid with a different company, are they going to be able to give us that? That's what I'm finding the most, is we need safe and we need reliable. And if this is, if this bus company is gonna give us both, then, you know, we can certainly agree with that.
So just thinking about this, right, um, and I respect, I'm Mr. McLaughlin's, I certainly, I would want to say things, I think, this is as much as I can give you. This is really what I can give you, I think, um, the thing about this that's appealing is that, um, the relationship that we have is well established and that the rates are not out of black with what's out there. And that's why you have the provisions to allow you to do a waiver, it's just that you, there's an entirely new board and I do not want this to in any way be received that titled something unilaterally, right? The thing about it is that the six and then the zero and three, you know, in the next few years, we're gonna have some serious budget things we need to consider. If we go out to bid and we get back with, you know, something else, um, that would not go well for us, so it's again, what you have in the hand versus what you would have in push. And best practice is best practice, just generally, unless there's a chance that you would not benefit from that. And that's why you have the provisions you have in there. So, again, it's like, the easiest thing for me to do would be just to just back off and let the whole thing go out to bid, that's clearly the safest thing. I can't be accountable for anything that you get, you know, that isn't great if I just let it go to bid. I mean, that, then I don't have that accountability, right? It's risky for me to put something out in front of you like this and say, you know, been at this for a year and a half or so, talked to the consulting guy, and we talked to people at Casco, we called around, this looks like it's a pretty good deal, this is riskier. Because you don't know me, you'd have to take a leap of faith, you know, god knows if we have a couple of problems in the first year or two, you know, we could come back to that, right? And in all frankness, so the easiest thing to do for me is to sit back and let it go out to bid. I'm putting it in front of you because I think this might be. I'm putting it in front of you, cause I think this might be
I mean, I would feel better if it weren't seven years that we went out to bid, personally.
Out of one.
But I think we are in a time, like, I feel like our bidding should have already been taking place prior to this proposal from, like, I feel like it should have already taken place.
But that's not how that will work, your company that you're working with will give you a proposal, you can ignore it, you go out to bid now. Like, this is the time. It's not like we could, you know, like, doing it over the summer would have been too late for last year, this this is the time, this is why it's in front of you. Because this is the season for the bidding, so that when we get to the summer, we can transition. We needed to work with first student on all the findings to get their proposal, which we got, and as soon as I had it, I gave it to, or gave it to your credit source for work. So the timeline is not, you know, you you don't wanna, you can't really do it too differently, because you can't do it inside, you know what I mean, like, you're you're gonna need to get, it has to be in place right now.
Um, my other concern is that we are just getting started, we're building a brand new building at Bridge Road, um, and um, having our existing bus company and that comfort level of, um, knowing the situation over there. Um, I feel like that's a factor we should all be considering, um, and when the new building is done, I know the plan is to be able to fit all the buses and one two.
Oh yeah, if, you know, one of our bigger problems has been that, if we can do that, we can be a lot happier.
Which is a big thing.
One of the things that I think Dr. Will is, like, most excited about, like, getting all the buses.
I'm actually, I'm actually very excited about this.
Right.
They make jokes about the flame works, I know.
I don't know, I I
Because we can finally stop this insanity, right?
Give some instructional time for it, yeah.
Some instructional time, some time.
Do the question through the board, I don't think it's more.
Yeah, time is good.
Okay, so, I mean, I feel like we've really went through it, I don't know, um, did we do a motion for board action, do you want a special meeting? Um, what are the thoughts on this bus contract?
You can do a couple ways, you can do a straw poll and just say, we support the, to, you know, to to accept this proposal, in which case I would use the provisions of thirty twenty to to move forward with them. Um, you could move it to action and and then make a motion to endorse the superintendent to seek it. Um, you could motion to have me refer it to the new FFC. Um, you can motion to go out to bid, if you do nothing, I'll probably bring, I'll just probably go out to bid. You know, like, if there's an option.
Let me ask you, when it goes, if it goes to, I mean, being a newbie here, if it goes to the, um, finance and facilities committee, that doesn't automatically make it a bid, correct? Like, they can review it at the door or?
No, well, we would consider it a small, then.
Yeah, you get it.
By the time it goes to the committee, the committee talks about it, and then it comes back to this board, you've lost the house.
Okay, so that is not an option.
And that's why, I put it out there, cause I don't want you to think I'm trying to circumvent that, but that is, the point is that, because of where we're at right now.
Okay, so, let's cross it up. Okay, so then really, ultimately, we can either do the straw poll and support, or I guess even even that would just make it, if it was rejected, uh huh.
Does it, do we require a vote on this?
Well, so, to un- to understand what I'm doing, I am using the waiver provisions of thirty twenty to do this, so, I mean, that's what I would be doing.
It's not really.
I'm putting it in front of you, because if you do not want me to do that, you should tell me now, you know, that that's the piece of it I'm looking for, either you do or do not, if you do not want me to do it, or you want me to to tell.
Could we just take a straw poll now, or do we need to move it back? I think we'll start with that, we'll start with the
Can I move to do a straw poll? Give it a second.
I
You know, we have to move, you know, we have to.
I don't know.
You just, well, uh
You just do it, I think we have to make a decision to do it.
Yeah. No, it's not really a motion, it's just, we're just hanging up a floor, we're gonna see what people wanna do.
Oh.
Okay.
Just say, would you, would you support, you know, super ten and accepting this proposal, moving forward?
And there's no, um, there's no other further changes that we can make, asking, um, like, can we get, like, a few newer buses, like, we're actually just going on this.
Well, you definitely can, like, up, like, upward of the cost, right?
Because I was gonna change the bus.
That would be a negotiation contract.
By a lot, or just by a little?
Well, every bus is, you know, a
It's gonna be more money.
It's a Mercedes, it's a hot, it's more money.
Go up, if you're looking for the new buses, the question's, yeah.
Well, it's just that there's a penalty, like, I have seen, like, the ten, the twelve.
What about like two thousand twelve?
Well, remember that, that rate that you got is because of the, of the, the composition of the deal.
It's their fleet, it's their fleet that would be not able to find another two thousand twelve.
If you change, if you change that, it changes the rate, and yes, I mean, look, it's it's literally, I just wanted to make sure that you had this option. And if you want, you know, want, I will carry out the bid, and again, the bid is the less risky thing. Because then I have no, there's nothing, you know, I am ner- nervous, because I, you know, I wanted you to have this option. Um, this is actually the, the one that I could be criticized more about than just letting you go to bid, so, you know.
Why?
But, um, but the only reason I'm doing it is the feedback we got, Mr. McLaughlin, the feedback we got was that there's, that we were not going to get better than this.
Correct.
And that was a third party transportation.
That was the consulting party, and it was all the past, certain people we talked to in, uh, in association.
Did we pay him? Did we pay him?
Yeah.
And he gave us nothing to even look at?
Well, he he, we pay him for his time to consult, and he gave us a lot, he gave us a lot in terms of the information he shared with us. But, you know, if you want, like, a comprehensive board, then they'll do stuff like that, but they'll start, oh.
Yeah, cause I see, I'm gonna try and meet that person for like the
We could We got the information out of him that we needed, uh, to determine what we should do or not do without, like, uh, having to pay even more.
So I guess
But you can also just look to, literally look around. You know, like, it's, the other, other companies, the other deals are not, they're not, like, this is not out of whack, that's the thing, I mean, if you look around at these deals, it's not out of whack.
So I guess I'm I'm leaning towards accepting the contract, it's it's very fear-based for me, but at this point, that's what I'm leaning towards.
So how do we do this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it go, I said, I said.
I just said, I'm I'm leaning towards accepting this contract. Just, but it's very fear-based, and I think that's what I don't like about it, like.
Then say no, I mean, look, I I say no, if you are afraid, say no, go to bid, if you, if you feel like you're being coerced, say no, say no, I am not, I'm just giving you the details of where we're at with the situation. It's a unique thing, a new board shifting over, uh, we have this in front of us right now, I have the authority, but I didn't wanna exercise that without because of all the conditions that we're in right now. So, you know, there's nothing about this that I want to feel like coerced into, it's gotta feel right, you wanna go out to bid, go out to bid, I, uh, I think we we tried to do our due diligence in every way we could, that's why I'm bringing it, because if it were, if it were not a favorable deal, I wouldn't even bother. This would take too, this, you know, too much time, it would be too risky, um, it's that it is a favor.
Let's, let's do a straw poll and see where we are, if we're gonna go ahead and so, um, those in favor, what, here, can you
It's a motion, it's a
A motion, so all, those in favor of accepting the, um,
Contract.
The contract, I mean, this is a
Yeah, I mean, a straw, you could
Either number one or number three, you're either wanting the motion superintendent or three, I mean, that's your two options, you're either wanting to debate or you want superintendent.
Yeah, I thought we were doing a straw poll.
So, so if you look at option number two under the bullets, superintendent exercises waiver thirty twenty, item four and five, with a straw poll or motion or support by the board about accepting the first student proposal and to work to finalize an updated contract, so if you wanna take a straw poll to authorize the superintendent to accept the first student proposal and work to finalize an updated contract, that's what you would do, you would do a straw poll to do that, and you go around and
And do
Yeses or noes, and
So everybody say yes then?
Say yes. Straw poll?
Straw poll would
Oh, straw poll.
Straw poll.
Okay. Were you
So we're doing a straw poll.
Yeah, okay. No, I just wanna get
The only reason I ask is she can contract.
So, so why don't we make a motion to move, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah.
Motion to endorse the superintendent to seek a three-year transportation agreement with first student under the conditions and prices identified in item H two.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Well, if you're gonna make it, if you're gonna instead of, if you're gonna make it a whole thing like that, maybe move it to
So move it to action, I'm sorry, make a mo- motion to move item H two to now K three for action.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Have you discussed it enough? Uh, all in favor?
I
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I don't know, I have to, they find the, I'm done with my report, she took it.
Okay.
What about H three?
Oh, sorry, sorry. So, H three is on
Support.
Yes, I'm sorry, you know, that one I wasn't sure, but, um, so where we're at right now, just to give you a heads up, um, I've mentioned this a couple of times. The district is involved in vision and mission work right now, and, uh, we're gonna soon be engaging Portrait of a Graduate. The vision mission work, the second session is on April twenty, I'm sorry, April twenty fifth.
November?
It's in November, twenty fifth, and it is in the library, and it's gonna start around eight o'clock, there'll be some, you know, things to get us woken, woken, the coffee and things like that, and then we will start the second phase or second part of visioning. Um, I have asked board members to participate, um, and if you're unable to participate in this, the Portrait of a Graduate work will be taking place over the span of the next few months, and you can certainly participate in that, but we don't have the actual meeting dates for that yet, because we're doing that first part of vision and mission work first. Um, as an aside, when we do get your points of information, I was going to throw out a couple of points for the, the board, typically, you, as a board, would do some, um, goal work. So, I don't know if you'd wanna decide maybe to make one of the January meetings about, you know, setting some goals for the next couple of years. So we can, you know, we've done that a couple of times, and just wanted to put those two things in the radar, but this particular thing, um, we are working with Ed Advance, we're also working with the Center, uh, Connecticut Center for School Change, um, and Division Mission Work and Portrait of a Graduate work are all getting us in an excellent position for our NEAS C visit, which is our, the visit that we get every ten years, and they
Union Association.
Certifies, yeah, schools and colleges, um, and union associations, colleges, and they they have the power to, uh, give you the thumbs up, if your school is in good standing, or if it's to our probation and all that, so we're, we're taking our steps to be proactive and way out of the curve, we're in the five-year approach zone, this is the right time to do it, and in three-year approach zone, we start making committees and things like that, so this is the right time. So if you wanted to participate in that, that is on, uh, November twenty fifth in the Talan Public Library, and we'll be doing that at eight. And you'll be mixing in with the people that have already started with, Ms. Moran's playing it, it's all day, yeah, playing on all day, but, um, other ones, Portrait of a Graduate work, we'll include some, um, in this.
Let's move on to any committee and liaison reports.
Only added H four.
H four.
Oh, eh, added H four, that's right, okay. So is the policy, uh, oh, adding the
Consideration of policy for the curriculum.
So both, um, I think that I'd like to say about this, both Ellington and Vernon, if we're using those as examples, um, they both have a director of teaching and learning or some sort of, like, curriculum director, um, Talan doesn't really have that, as I'm sure you all know. Um, so I would be hesitant to add an extra, an additional committee at this point. Uh, maybe until we get a curriculum director or something, someone in that role to serve as the liaison for the, the, the staff. Just, like, looking at the, like, the, the wording of the curriculum committee that was put together for tonight makes me nervous. Like, as someone that served on both sides, um, especially because you know, we've, we've, we've heard this before, but our, our staff works extremely hard, they're not paid as much as other districts, and they could leave, and then we have huge holes. And that's, I think, the hugest that's something that we all really need to be aware of, um, and then we wanna add another potential commitment to really an already overworked staff that really doesn't believe in a fit, cause why else would they be here? Um, making less money than other districts, like, uh, you know, some districts poach votes, because they know they can get them, you know, um, a decent price, anyway, so I'm I'm rambling, but my point is this. Without a person in the director of teaching and learning, curriculum director, that kind of position, starting a committee like this makes me nervous. Um, because I don't know that we're gonna have somebody that can direct the, the professional work that is needed to do. I'm not saying that we shouldn't look and talk about a curriculum, I absolutely love those times. But I'm just saying, like, for us to take this role and superimpose it, and I know you guys kinda said that's not really what we were looking to do, and I'm really relieved to hear that. Um, but I just want us to be very careful, cause I wouldn't want us to ostracize our hardworking admin, our hardworking staff, um, teachers, et cetera, so.
Is this where you want me to weigh in on this, or?
No, I'm sorry.
Well, let's go over on the table first and get, um, everyone's information, you had your hand up first, so
But, you know.
You know, let's get everyone's ideas, and then we will
My question was for Dr. Will, though, um, just in terms of state statute, you know, that's, that's why I'm being such a stickler about this, I guess, and I just
Yes, no, I can, I can respect, so, this is where, I just don't wanna, like, upset
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everyone gets a chance to
Well, I will definitely answer that.
Okay, so we can answer it, yeah.
You're gonna have a lot of questions.
Do I, do I, do I need to do it now, or?
Oh, go ahead, I mean, go ahead.
Okay, um, so so a V O E establishes and can establish things like that, um, there, usually the language that's used is the duty is not directly imposed. So, it's not that the curriculum committee is necessarily being recommended, we have actually curriculum committees and a whole process for curriculum work, and how it's in the process of, of, um, curriculum development, um, I manage that with the supervisors that we have, uh, we haven't had them, you know, so we recently got them. Um, and so, you know, uh, it it makes sense to have some kind of school district curriculum committee, the issue isn't that, the issue is the language of shall work with the administrator responsible for curriculum for designing and implementing, so for instance, if I, I wouldn't wanna, you know, it's, it's not that I don't respect the volunteers, which I do, I think there's great intelligence there, they have a lot to share, all community members have something to offer, but you know, you're not gonna have a volunteer designing your jet engine, you're not gonna have a, you know, volunteer doing your heart surgery, you know, those, that's not to say that we're gonna have a volunteer implementing, implementing to me means teaching. Designing, you know, like, and that's the, that, those are terms, and it's not the curriculum, it's, it's those terms that I think are the thing that are sort of skewed. Um, and I would not have selected those terms myself, that's why I offered to weigh in on this, um, and to get part of
What would be your suggestion?
So, I I do have a suggestion, um, and I also had a couple of other things with respect to the administrators, again, consulting, um, and working together on that would be important, because you have some contractual things, for instance, um, people, um, can come to a board meeting, that's in the contract. Coming to subcommittee meetings is not in the contract. Um, I'm, I act as your curriculum director right now, I can come to anything you want me to. Um, you also don't have curriculum supervisors in social studies, unified arts, oral language, no curriculum director, like, you don't have, these, the roles are roles that I fill. Um, in places that I can, we do have some liaisons, but they're, they're not gonna be able to meet at night without extra compensation. So it'd have to meet during the day with a certain dynamic, right, so it's just a lot of things to work out, so
I did, I was on article thirty four, it's future contract as well, and, um, reading that first beginning, like, I had which I had in front of me, it was listed on there.
Well, so Yeah, it's just, if you're gonna, you know, you, people, um, your curriculum committees, if you're gonna do it as a subcommittee of the board, usually meet once a month, right? So, you know, I would recommend that the language be, the curriculum committee shall work with the superintendent and or his or her designated in reviewing existing curriculum, researching trends of education, and adopting curricular changes to enhance education programs, because that's consistent with ninety ten, and your role of adopting, not designing and implementing, right? And then having me as your, as the person you're meeting with, I can pull in different staff for different reasons at different times. We have curriculum committees already functioning, I can explain all of that to you, I can bring things to you, I can, and just like we have for the policy committee generally, I'm a liaison for that, you know, we're truly, cause I am your chief operating officer, same thing for communications, same thing for FFC, which is applying the same model to it. So, you know, using the language, um, that I've proposed allows you to stick with that, and the things that I'm trying to do with people in social studies, so for instance, if you wanna talk to the social studies supervisor, there isn't one. Um, I I function as best I can in that role, and I would come and talk to you, and bring people with me that was needed. So if you wanted to talk about the new requirements of the state on the US African American history class, um, I know about that, I can come to that, I can talk to you about that, I can bring in other people to talk about that. I can come to that and talk to you about that, I can bring in other people to talk about that, but that's gonna be a much more efficient and, and, you know, um, a, a much more effective way to, to get to, I think, what you're looking for, which is just having the chance to talk about it, you know, uh, learn about it, right? Um, and then we're not doing anything outside of, uh, you can't really require them to come to those, um, subs because their, their requirement is to come to the board.
I just wanna make sure that
And it's usually through me, you know, but
Like, well, we have whatever we do, 'cause I almost feel like, you know, I'm glad to hear that we do have some sort of curriculum committee because under the state statute, it is under the, uh, boards of education section. Duties are boards of education, and then it goes into the committee shall recommend, develop, review, and approve all curriculum for the local or regional school district. So I feel as though, as the board of education, we do need to
Yeah, it's, it's not, you're talking about ten, two, twenty, which I totally get, and I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying what I would say, that's why I wanted to interact with you on that, that's what I was trying, you know, because I can help you.
Yeah.
It's just design and implement, you know, it's usually, that's not what, that's, they're not implementing, they're, they're doing more of the adopting, right? And the way it works in this district, you know, because of your resource, you know, you have no social studies supervisor, you know, these are things that I, the roles I would take, and I would work in coordination, just like I do on policy, just like I do on F F C, just like I do on communications. So in those wordings, we can really start working, you get it?
Um, so, as far as state statute, I believe what they're referring to is the board as a whole serves as your curriculum committee. But when you're forming a separate one, we're all not gonna be, you don't need to have a separate committee of the board. Your board serves as your whole, and collectively, as your curriculum. So I feel like if we're getting presentations from our curriculum supervisors on a regular basis, that's us being informed about curriculum. And if there's anything else that Dr. Willett wants to talk about specifically that's going on with their goals and visioning, um, in regard to curriculum, that that's, that's where we come in. Um, our role is not to get into the weeds of specific curriculum. Um, our role is to support what's going on with the superintendent and staff. I am very concerned about asking, um, additional time constraints out of our staff, um, and actually might violate some contractual.
I will say I'm excited to work with you on that, perhaps, you know, it's just that, I just throw one little piece, it's just that I just don't, the, the implementing, designing piece, these individuals have a lot of training, have master's degrees, they're spectacles, they're years working in this. It's even slightly offensive to say, and I'm not saying anyone would be, but that someone, you know, could implement and design that hasn't been trained in at all, just like
I understand that, yeah, no, I, I get that. Um, what's, is the Florida Tony, he had his hand?
Yeah, and, and I just wanna touch on a couple of points, and one, you know, respectfully disagree with what Ms. Moran was saying there, that the state statute in section E that Dr. Willett is talking about says that each local and regional board of education shall establish a school district curriculum committee. So it's saying the board has to establish this committee. Now, the one thing I would suggest is it goes on to give, it says, committee shall recommend, develop, review, and approve all curriculum. You know, that, that wording is already, it's already put out there for us.
But it's the committee that's
And Dr. Willett is, Dr. Willett is our, our point of contact.
Correct.
You know, and, uh, I do believe that with this committee developed, if Dr. Willett felt that he was the best person to sit and discuss that, excuse me, from the school side, then, okay, that makes sense. But I would trust that he would then go back and get the resources that he felt necessary to have.
It's an exciting conversation, I love it, there's a lot of good stuff, I'm, I'm, I love this stuff, you know, I bore the heck out of other people with it, but I really love it.
Um, so, I, I do agree with some of your points about changing some of the wording that's in there, um, from maybe implementing to something else, like you mentioned, to more towards adopting. Um, I would just like to say that, um, just to touch on Ms. Moran's point, um, you know, I, I enjoyed coming and listening to those presentations that were given to us about the math and science curriculum. Um, but, you know, curriculum, it's, it's kind of a, a reason for the school existing. And I feel that would, many of you could actually relook at it in a lot more depth. Those presentations was nice, but, you know, you were just kinda scratching the surface. And obviously, you know, you gotta work with your administrators, with the superintendent to make sure that, uh, or, you know, talk to professionals and rely on them, but I think that a curriculum committee would allow us to the school to have a lot more depth, and that's why it's important.
And I wanna just raise again, Walt, we only have one kid, and it's Walt. Um, and with rebuilds, with all the other stuff that's going on in our district, this may just be too much, um, to ask for him to do. This is the stuff of learning, Jacob, I a hundred percent agree, this is the stuff, this is the stuff, it's like, yippee, we're here, we're learning, yes, we go. But we also have to say, who's gonna run this, you know, on behalf of the board? You know, it's Walt, and, and Dr. Willett only has so many hours in a day, so until we can get, I just wanna say right before, until we get someone to be in the role of a curriculum director, you know, director of teaching and learning, lots of different terms for it, it's all kinda the same thing, um, with an O nine two or an O nine three preferably, so we can have a second, um, for, for Dr. Willett. Uh, I, I'm nervous about this, because, you know, there's only so many resources, sorry.
But I just, no, absolutely, if I heard what Dr. Willett said just a minute ago, he's actually excited to have these conversations, so I, I don't necessarily see this as the burden of it.
It's the one stuff.
Well, it is one, you know, I really do like this stuff, you know, and I think it bore the heck out of people when I, when I do do this sometimes, but it's, um, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if you're gonna do that, I respect that, we have various committees that work on things, I can help very much with this, if you wanna involve me in the process. So the language that I would suggest would be, the curriculum committee shall work with the superintendent and/or his or her designees in reviewing existing curriculum, researching trends in education, and adopting curricular changes to enhance education programs, because I think that's the, that, that fits the role that you were talking about, and it lets me do that, which is important, just like I do on policy and all that. If you're going to do it, then
Um, just another option, I don't know if it is an option, if this could be an ad hoc committee. Just a, just a thought.
I feel like curriculum is something that's a continual
I just, we all have a lot of committee work to be on, and, um, at least it would be, monthly, it would be when he's got everything needed to give to the
I was just, yeah, hold on.
Does it make sense then to ask, do you want to be on one curriculum committee and would you, you know,
you know, ready to recharge and jump in and go, uh, Jacob, would you?
I'd be happy to share it.
Okay.
Yes, I would both of us.
Sure.
Oh, that's, so that's three, but, uh, but, but let's just continue on anyways, just to see.
I would probably be interested in attending, but not making that commitment.
Um, two, three. Attending. Okay.
Okay.
No. There's enough people already involved, it's good.
Four. So we have four that would be willing to do that, make that commitment.
At least have to say other four can go from time to time, right, even if it's your Yeah, these things are all meeting in the public
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but, but it's, you wanna have some standing members, so that's
Yeah, and then actually welcome, you know, is, um, more people that wanna, oh, uh, but you do, you know, the, the, you do, just keeping in mind again, when you're looking at it, that, you know, that, when you ask for things and you work and get everything, you don't have the curriculum director, that's true, so we didn't have, you know, time, and we do, just to be able to manage, you know.
So under board action, could we change the language to what you just read?
I can read.
Good ones at night, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Fisher.
Well, I was just gonna, we had talked about the policy had been added, right, so does it make sense, given that you're sort of asking for a little bit more time to, you know, maybe prepare or whatever, to allow policy to meet added, we have to have two readings, and
Yeah, but that makes sense.
Then we have the opening to be available to add it, right? I'm, I don't know if we're pert for the horse, if we add it and then go back to policy and say, hey, can you?
I like that, I like that.
I, I don't know, I'm not trying to put it off at all, but I'm just wanting to understand the best way to do it.
Yeah, no, I think that with his, beginning of his, you know, coming up with a new statement for it, you know, getting the feel for who is interested in it so that we know that it can continue, but we can also discuss it more before putting it in.
So, so I'm just, sorry, I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, so I'm just hearing that we're, we're gonna revise the wording and maybe put this on the agenda the next time, to do a reading, kinda thing?
And if policy could meet.
And then when policy meets, so we can, and then we're just reading.
Yeah, I can help in, uh, do, uh, the policy, things right up there.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And then maybe by then, we're talking about budget, and we're talking about adding that curriculum directly?
You'll, you're gonna, your, your timeline here is December tenth, which you're gonna, you have Jessica, who's your board attorney, who's coming, uh, December tenth, November eleventh, I'm sorry.
Well, this is the tenth, I have that training.
So, December eleventh, she's coming to give you your, uh, FOIA, you know, responsibility piece for, uh, presentation.
Well, that's a responsibility.
Um, so that one would be pretty much taken up, but January, if you want, that's, I think, the next one you have is January.
I don't really wanna push it off to community.
That seems like
I wanna do something on it.
So, so could we establish it, and then it goes back to policy, and then, yes, well, through the reading, I'm not sure We could refer it to policy, right? Can we do that?
Could we add back our meeting that was canceled?
Okay.
Or add now, or we have a budget workshop next week, we could add
Oh, can we do it beforehand?
Yeah.
Can we meet beforehand and
If you wanted to do that, six thirty beforehand, I think
The budget workshop's at seven.
Right, you could probably meet ahead of that, um, just notice, which I think we have enough notice, first special meeting. I just wanna check on that, you know, but I think
More special, and then just, we're not gonna land up the agenda with anything but this, like this is what the special meeting is gonna be about, is
We can meet at six thirty.
So, yeah. You know, I think we can get that done in half an hour, review, I mean
I mean, my only caveat is that sometimes, right before those, I'm running around like a chicken in the head, I'm trying to set up the president of the stuff.
Yeah, budget workshops and that.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, you can make it six, and then a half, half hour prepare for that meeting, and set up the project, and if you can't, it's no worries, it just seems more of a
Well, six o'clock, if we do this
When would we also be meeting, you know? Is policy, uh, well, scheduled meeting, is that?
Do you have the, do you have the sheet with the, um, committees, with the, the dates? Dr. Willett?
So, uh, right now, policy has the, the first meeting is January twenty second.
With the, uh Okay, so, the policy, yeah, so we have Tony, Christina, and Kate on policy.
Okay.
So you guys can try to get that in the works and make it sooner than January.
If I'm staying, then we can work, um, scheduling posses.
I, I'm okay if you want me to do this, it's, it's fine, if you wanna do that prior to the meeting, that's
I mean, I, I, you know, budget workshop, our
You don't have to set up something special, if you wanna do that, it's just how, you don't get, like, hundreds of people.
I would, I would strain your time with that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking
Well, you don't, you know, I just don't wanna create a situation where you're pushing, 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 and then it gets more complicated. If you're all gonna be in one place and you wanna do that, I'll, I'll deal with it, I, I look harried no matter what, so, it is what it is, my natural state.
That is next week, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, if you wanted to kinda get some lotion, you know, so
Get some lotion, I would, I would say, let's have policy meet on it, we'll come up with the language with you, and then do things, you know, by the policy, have it written out and everybody can look at it, um, if we could just do that quickly after the December eleventh meeting.
It's a, she'll go first.
She'll go first. It sounds like that one's, like, just, we can't add it with that.
But if this is almost as a first reading, policy does what we have to do.
You can do anything you want, just, uh, that would be a late, late meeting, which is okay, right?
Are you trying to have policy meet before the December eleventh meeting?
Yeah, and not rush Dr. Willett for next week, too.
I, I think expecting policy to meet and then be ready, and you guys by next Wednesday is a bit unnecessary.
Yeah. Is a bit much.
I do think we can aim for an early December conversation, and policy to do something, lays us further than that.
So now that I know your membership, I'll have my secretary reach out and organize the date that would, would work, and then we can s, we can have that policy meeting and then go with these subsequent
So what's, ten, until they put it on for the December eleventh meeting then, to go through after you guys?
Go first, right?
Yeah, we'll just go with it.
So just keep it, you know, then be ready to have a later meeting that night, that's all, you might go past ten.
Okay.
Does that FOIA thing goes for a while, you have questions, she'll answer, you know. So I'll start to prepare some material, and, and help speed it along.
So that's all to go. Chairperson's report.
Around Aliza?
Okay, oh, the committee and liaison, oh. Okay.
Um, I just have a couple things just for Kate, um, on their website under, um, advocacy and legislation. There's something called Cape Education Law Sumaries, um, if you guys wanna review those, I have a pa, I have a paper version, but they are on the website online. Um, there's things in there that we're required to adhere to, like Dr. Willett was telling about the social studies piece on the, um, African-American studies, I forgot what they call it.
Yeah, so, after, Mr. Andrew, you know, right?
And the Latino.
And there's a number of other requirements.
So, there's a lot of things in there, if anybody wants to look at it, it's, um, educational.
That's good.
Um, and that happens every year, session. And then Karen and I are both going to be attending the Kate, um, conference, well, you're going Thursday, Friday, Friday and Saturday, so, they're sounding great, so. We'll come back with lots of good stuff.
Any other?
That conference happens every year, and typically we try to get board members to go, it's just, it's like every conference you've ever been to, but it's got, you know, it's in Mystic, Mystic, Maryup.
And the board pays to go?
Yeah. And you pay to be part of Kate?
I paid so myself last year, I was just wondering.
I don't know, will you pay for your, your, you know, ticket in?
It's fine. Not that one, it's okay, don't, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm out of order.
Oh, you should, you should not have.
Out of order, okay. Any other, uh, committee or liaison reports? Okay, so now we are on chairperson's report. I do have, um, a quick little board that I'm going to read. Um, I would like to take a minute or two to thank the town of Tallinn for this opportunity to strengthen our schools, bridging the gap within community and ensuring the twenty-first standards, century standards. We are a hundred percent dedicated to our students, families, and constituents of this town. We need to start off with an optimistic outlook, as positive changes will follow. Um, let's keep upbeat energy flowing in this room, be kind and courteous to each other. We have been elected and have a responsibility to fulfill. We take on these roles freely and must now represent the full fifteen thousand town residents. Discussions are needed, as some of the best ideas come from different people collaborating. These discussions need to take place civilly, so all voices are heard. Here at this table are many different perspectives, let's listen to understand, not simply to just reply. Time is being provided to this board from each member, let's be productive with it. In accordance with the bylaws, Robert rules will be used as a formal structure. We will hand raise and proceed in an orderly manner. Under discussion, I will relax the rules, however, if need be, I will install Robert's rules again. Please remember to respect each other. Trust but verify is a motto I personally live by, there'll be questions, lots of questions. Understanding issues that are the first step in figuring out solutions. There is no one answer, due diligence is a huge factor when making these decisions. We need to engage the community on thoughts and experiences. I'm hoping that we can get correspondence from a variety of people. We are here to answer questions, but if we don't know, we will ask and find out. I am a fast learner, but it will take an adjustment period. Please be kind and patient with the new members to this board, we are here to make positive changes. Thank you again as we begin this new board together. We can and will do this, as we all of this town that we call home, Tallinn.
Thank you.
So, now we have, um, the Now we have um the board action.
So we're gonna table K one then?
Correct.
Does that mean we motion?
I was just gonna ask.
I don't know.
That I did not read at all. Um do we need to motion to table K one?
Let's put it this way, you'll never go wrong in motion, you know, like if you wanna confirm it that way, you'll never go wrong.
Okay.
So make the motion.
If you get people all saying they wanna do that.
Second, all in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty board's request.
Any discussion?
One just quick question, uh the ones that have asterisks right now are still.
Right, and then when we get to closer to it, we'll bring it up and we'll say, hey, do we wanna cancel this and then.
But they're they're still on the books, the cards are booked, but.
Yes.
See after the number I cancel.
Well, it will remind us.
Oh, maybe we'll have them, you never know.
You usually. Walt will remind us.
They want to cancel this. No, yeah, I really can cut it. Okay, so um all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries. Um the next business in order will be public participation. No, both.
Well.
Transportation.
Transportation, okay, free.
So yeah, with the tension motion, if you'd like to.
I'd like to make the motion to endorse the superintendent to seek a three-year transportation agreement with first student under the conditions and prices identified in item H two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any objections? Then motion carries. Public participation, okay. The next business in order will be public participation. Please be aware that there are two-minute time limits. Comments will be limited to the agendas, the items on the agenda.
I always have something stuck. Uh George Gilligan, Spicy Gay wrote, uh I disagree with the transportation issue. I think we should go out to bid, uh state's losing a lot of people, a lot of students, it should be companies out there hungry for us. And it might give us a decent bid to uh help us in that aspect. We need to cut money somewhere, maybe it's just around the corner. We need to come up with some cost-saving measures, but we're gonna be a deep do. As far as eliminating some buses, it's a great idea, we've never eliminated those buses to keep up with the declining enrollment, which is more than twenty-five percent from our maximum. When I was in school, uh when I went to Elton High School for four years, we had a one-hour ride each way, so it's two hours plus on a bus every day. So I had three to five minutes for the buses for the different children to change routes, uh you know, we're. It is, uh I I could see where we need to maybe cut uh some teachers to attrition. First Grove had four hundred seventy-seven students, it's now gonna have forty-one classrooms, that's less than twelve students per classroom. I went to school in this very building, there was twenty-eight in my first grade class, so and we had no extra help but teachers. So I think we need to find some places to suck it up a little bit with our budgets. We need to start start thinking about where there's different things. I'm not talking about burdening the kids or anything else, but uh some of the class sizes I think need to be adjusted. And also there's buses and other, and there's gotta be other places where we can cut some money reasonably.
Any other?
It's fun to be on this end, I thought it was on home. Um I don't think I said my address in the ego, at least I come earlier, so I apologize for that. Anyways, I'm glad to see the transportation, uh I'll be with that, but I just want a clarification, who's the chair of the um curriculum committee?
We didn't exist.
Doesn't exist, we don't have any.
We just have members that are willing to do it.
Oh, that's good.
So that's the first step.
Alright, that's our chair.
Anyone else?
Me, yeah, changing register to sixty-eight, I was not for it. Um I just wanna say really quickly, um it was said that, I don't know who said it, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it that curriculum is the reason that the school exists, and I I don't think a lot of people agree with that, including myself. Um students are the reason the schools exist. Um and so every decision should be made off of students' needs, not curriculum based, so I just think we should um face the decisions that are made on our Talon Board of Ed around the students, not the necessarily the curriculum. Thank you.
Point of information. Any other public comments? Okay, um the next business in order will be points of information.
Um so I just wanted to say that about curriculum, um the reason why I said that is because the purpose of the school is to educate kids. And curriculum is what you teach kids and how you teach it, so that's what I meant by that.
Anyone else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next business in order is the future. Uh the next business in order will be new business.
So.
Yes, the future, your new business. No, they just, those are the different things.
Right, they're they're, you know, they're always going to be starting.
You circular and then.
I can want good tours, cause I have to.
Yeah, tours.
It would be great.
Of right down.
It's.
Tours.
Structural rounds and tours.
Skill tours.
I would love a tour. I mean, I've been in all of them except for the First Grove, but still, I'd love a tour.
Yeah, both both physical and instructional.
Oh, I haven't, can I trick him?
I don't know.
Can I have a thing, an idea that I have, that I have?
Where are you putting it?
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I don't know. We're we're not going back to the beginning.
My idea, no, I don't know. Um so my, I had an idea to possibly invite um more seniors to come in and volunteer at our school as like an outreach program.
That would be fantastic, and to add on to that, I know they have some other towns that have like a reading helpers and things of that interest of that.
Yeah, 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 I know that they do have some volunteers already, but maybe we could talk to the town council and work with them. Um you know, like as an incentive, something.
That could be another new business, the future, future, future.
Yeah, see, maybe that's.
The.
If everybody's not too tired, um we do need a group photo for the website.
Yeah.
Oh, we're not done yet, we're not done yet.
I just didn't want people to like half of a go, like trying to do that, it's like.
Just up.
Okay, um.
Yeah, there was.
We have the addition uh and changes to the agenda. What I would like to see is going forward that this item be listed as approval of the agenda, listed as B prior to the approval of minutes, because it doesn't make sense to have it on the bottom, and I believe that when we sit down for an agenda, we should be able to uh review it and just i- any last minute changes, put that approval on there.
I I, it's at the bottom, um because um uh when we communicated about it, it was within a very short span.
You just plucked it in there, I know, I get that.
So I didn't wanna have to make order after this, so I emailed, I emailed you when I said I'm going to put it on the bottom for this one and you can move it anywhere you want, so I I didn't want to order all those.
And that's okay. So I think going forward, yeah, no, going forward, I think we'll put it as B.
So would that one require a vote or would the approval?
I don't think it's really a motion or anything, it's just the actual structure of the agenda.
Yeah, no, we don't need that, so you should.
So you want additions and changes to be B, right?
To be B before the minutes.
Or just approval?
Yeah, I would put like approval of the agenda, cause addition additions and changes are typically what it is, but we could approve the agenda, the motion. Yeah, cause then you've got approval of the minutes and it just kinda feels nice. We'll need to. Motion to adjourn?
Is that acceptable?
Okay.
We'll move the adjourn.
Oh, take a picture, anything.
I'll take a picture.